All right, let everyone in.
Thank you, Shane. So being Wednesday, May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four at six P M. We go to item one and call the Bridgewater Planning Board to order. Item two, this evening, we have an executive session. So I'll read the executive notes. This meeting will commence in open session. The planning board will enter into executive session pursuant to M G O, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one. Suffolk Construction versus D C A M, four, four, nine, Mass, four, 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 two thousand and seven. To discuss strategy with respect to pending litigation. In the case of John P. Walden as trustee of the Walden Properties Realty Trust, first Patrick Triscoll and all fifty-four grand back. Where an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position for planning board. And so the chair declares and to seek advice of legal counsel. So under item two, executive session, do we have a motion to go into executive session? So move, Mr. Gallaudet, with a second. Miss Spogano, you still with us?
Yes.
You want a second one?
Oh, yeah, I'll second it.
Are the only two members besides my someone on named Miss Spogano and Mr. Gallaudet?
All right, you can do roll call.
Are the only two members on Miss Spogano and Mr. Gallaudet?
That's correct.
It's all take the role. Miss Spogano?
Yes.
The Geller?
Yes.
Remember, yes.
All right, I'm gonna put everyone else back into the waiting room and then we'll enter executive session. All right. The board voted to come back into open session and vote out of executive session.
Well, thank you, Shane. Now we're back to item three. But before we got, so let's, I'll, I'll read the public hearing notice when everybody's on at six thirty, Shane, okay? If you're okay with that.
So it's, I think it's appropriate to do it now. Up to you.
All right, so before we get item three, I'll read the, the governor's order. This meeting is being held remotely in accordance with the provisions of the Open Meeting Law. Pursuant to the governor's approval of the supplemental budget bill, temporary provisions pertaining to the Open Meeting Law have been extended to March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Specifically to spread the extension of our public bodies to continue to hold meetings remotely without the requirement of the public bodies physically present at a meeting location to provide adequate and alternative access to remote meetings. The language of the extension does not make any substantive changes to the Open Meeting Law, other than extending the expiration date. But temporary provisions regarding remote meetings, March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three to March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Members of the public are encouraged to participate remotely and shall address the question through the chair of the board or host of Mr. O'Brien this evening. The following members of the Bridgewater Planning Board are participating remotely this evening. I'm Patrick Triscoll, the chair. Mr. Stephen Gallant, Ms. Esther Rojas, and an alternate member this evening, Ms. Emily Chase Spogano. During this meeting, all of the votes will be held as roll call votes. The following Bridgewater Town staff will also be participating with us this evening remotely. Mr. Robert Rully, the Community Economic Development Director. Mr. Shane O'Brien, the town planner. Ms. Christie Jamie, Assistant Town Planner. Mr. Greg James, E V Town Engineer. And Mr. Stephen Salabri, the Buildings Commissioner. At this time, everyone's mics are muted. The board's mics will be unmuted to the whole meeting. And as items appear on the agenda, the projects represented in the mics will be muted. If this is a public hearing, I'll ask a public comment. We ask you to chat feature. They ask your question by listening to your name, your address, any question. The chair or the host will recommend questions in order. You can also use the raise my hand feature in the participant menu and be unmuted when the chair or the host recommends it. My guy, please say your name and address before asking a question. Grab the phone, you could ask five, nine, raise your hand. She should know that by now. Item three, we have this evening. Mr. O'Brien has been working on a fifty-five plus zoning ordinance. This is a continued discussion. I would see the staff for section eight point seven, connected adults, senior, village ordinance. I know we did some discussion, Mr. O'Brien, if you want to update the board, go ahead.
Sure, so I sent along and posted on the town's website under our planning board applications. A version five point oh, I sent around a updated version of some of the comments that internally we made as well as board members at the last meeting, as well as members of the public. So on Monday, I did provide a draft over to the board members. It was noted by some board members that some of the language didn't necessarily make sense, but it made sense in my own head. So what I provided today and is on the website is the updated version, which kind of mentions the updated equation for how we would determine maximum amount of units for a particular project to be done for a, this fifty-five plus village ordinance. So I can pull up the red line version, which is available online. This is a red line. Which is updated from the April meeting that we had two weeks ago. So let me pull that up and we can discuss some of the changes and if the board members have any comments, happy to share them. So that's talking about the change in date. One of the comments we had internally was defining what a triplex was, simple as that, a townhouse consisting of three individual units. What I want to distinguish is that a triplex from all indications in would be defined solely under this ordinance. Because in any other circumstance, it would be defined as a multifamily dwelling within town. We updated the opens, I updated the open space preservation area. I got rid of the term shared. Just so it wouldn't be confusing, it would be defined under what we would define our open space and then increased the those numbers from R E B to R S C to forty percent. So the unit allowance for each zoning district, the equation that we have below that we discussed at the last meeting was that you would take the developable lot area.
Can you go back real quick? Cause I, I, I think I misunderstood something you just said.
Yes.
So the, this is kind of like an open, the, the intent of this was to be like an open space conservation development, correct?
To an extent, it would be more, I guess, focusing on open space, whereas typically our open space and conservation restriction, based on what we've utilized it as is more for conservation. I think the intent here is to be utilizing this as open space reserved for those who kind of live there, not necessarily for all members of kind of the public, but we can, we can discuss that.
But you can do that now. There are neighborhoods where H O A owns it, but the intent is that it's supposed to be like for passive recreation, left in its natural state, that type of thing, correct?
Oh, absolutely. Yes. As what we define open space as in the town.
And then each lot would, each lot within the development would have to comply with your zoning requirements as well.
I would say I would say it would be the total project. I wouldn't do it based on each lot. Cause that would, that would become difficult to measure. Well, at that, at that point.
So, so do, so if you had a ten acre lot, for example, right?
Sure.
The way I understand it, and I thought we were doing one, it's just like our open space, you know, four acres would be set aside for, for for, for open space. And then the other six acres are actually going to develop. We don't reduce.
Density at all. You, you just throw the density on small lots. So by connecting the units and everything on that six acres, there's still grass and things on that six acres, roadways, grass, et cetera. But the four acres is, is open space. That's dedicated open space. It can be just used for the neighborhood. You could have walk-in trails, passive recreation, that stuff on it, but that's more like deserved one. So the whole ten acres doesn't get cleared.
Sure.
Only six of them.
That is correct. Yes. You're understanding it correctly.
Is it, is it stated that way in this? Because, I don't know. So.
Well, we can, I think as, as we go on, I think we can better define it. Like I said.
I, I, so it's a preservation area. That's, that's all right. That's fine.
Yeah, we can edit that. So we do it.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so we do have this table two as well. This is an update where we talk about. So based on the last meeting, Mr. Chair, we talked about this concept of we, we, we had a lot of language about bonus density and I think you and I discussed this where the project itself should have the bonus density. So we don't have to go through a bunch of loops to incorporate bonus density for a project. If you're in a certain district and you hit a certain requirement, that's the bonus density. So the unit allowance for each zoning district based on the equation that we produce is that the amount of units that you're going to get from a property of this is the total development, total, total developable lot area of the entirety of the lot that's available for development. You divide that by the minimum lot size for single families within the underlying district. And that would equal an amount of units. And then based on that zoning district, you would get that multiplier for, I guess, the bonus density. So in the example of the R A B district, the multiplier is one. So there's not really necessarily a bonus density for units in an R A B district. You would be simply allowed to create a fifty-five plus community based on what the underlying, so it'd be acre, one unit per acre. But the allowance of duplexes and triplexes for a fifty-five plus, whereas in an R C, it would be a one point two five. And in an R D district, it would be a one point five multiplier. So as well as the last meeting, it was a discussion about parcels, tables three was a little bit confusing just based on how it was shown. So what I redefine this as providing frontages and frontage requirements for single families, duplex townhouses and triplex townhouses. So this gives an indication of what the expectation is for each district. Or what a single family would allot for, for frontages, what a duplex townhouse would allow for, or just a regular duplex in a triplex townhouse style. On table four, changes it from dimensional requirements to setback requirements. None of that changed. The building height requirements are the same. The setback from roadway are the same as well as the separation from other buildings. So as stated, we include this new equation for how you determine this maximum amount of units allowed. As per the last ordinance, we would be discuss, this would be determined in a preliminary subdivision that would be reviewed by this board. Additionally, we provided language talking about the maximum amount of dwelling units shall be computed based on the developable area and we define what a developable area. So that's excluding streams, ponds, wetlands, floodplain, drainage esements and areas open to our R D current restrictions. So a lot of this being crossed off is, Ted's here. Some kind of confusing language in terms of what we would define in terms of open space and preservation areas. We kind of went from a, these different setbacks and square footages per acreage and unit. And we've kind of redefined it under what our current ordinance is. So we've kind of simplified how we do the equation. So it makes a little more sense based on current zoning rather than kind of coming up with things as we go. I added some language about each building shall face either the existing street or upon the, the public and private way constructed of the development. That's to prevent duplexes and triplexes not facing the roadway because you'd be surprised how common that happens in some cities that I live in. As well as we talk about some additional requirements about how setbacks, or I think I actually just moved that, I moved that area from one area of the ordinance to talk about additional requirements. So talking about parcel setbacks, how certain stone walls and other structures can't be featured. Or they may feature stone walls and street trees along the frontages, but certain items can't be.
Just as a point of order, you're at six thirty.
Six thirty? All right. So.
Pat, what I would like to do is if we can get this finalized at the June fifth meeting, that we can then bring it to the council and have it referred back. Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah, and I, you know, I don't want to be the only to talk. So if anybody else is going to say, say, I, Shane, I think these updates are great. I just my head was spinning last time because I, I know half of a graph, a chat was missing. And then the way to compute, develop, you know, the number of units you could build, you had to go through all these hoops and do all these plans, I think. Simplifying it for developers so they can do simple math right on the back of a piece of paper and know, hey, I get X number of units. You know, if I, if I do a fifty-five plus in residential D, if I build conventional houses, I'm going to get ten, but if I do fifty-five plus, I'm going to get fifteen. I think that's, that's a good thing. So that's, that's really the change I wanted to see. So.
Yeah, so feel free to continue to provide comments my way, but I'm happy to have a continue the discussion regarding this, but it is available online. But please check it out and see if you have any comments or changes.
Um, I have a question. So you, you just mentioned that you, you're welcome additional feedback or comments and questions. When would you like that by? Do we have until June fifth ideally for you or?
Just from a timeline perspective, if
Yeah.
by June fifth, but this is an item that will come back before this board. So it's an ongoing comment process. So all zoning, zoning ordinance get referred to planning board from council. But this is just kind of an opportunity to kind of provide feedback if there's anything within the language that's, you know, of concern or questionable prior to that.
Thank you.
No problem.
Anyone else on the board? Now, good, good job, Shane. It's really good.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd like to make at least a brief comment if that's okay, Mr. Chairman. I, I really appreciate the work that you've done on this, Shane. This is a good, good step towards bringing us into more alignment with, you know, other similar communities when it comes to over fifty-five housing. And it's nice to know that we're taking these steps to try to make the community a little bit more attractive to those who may be more advanced in life experience and want to call Bridgewater home. And this allows us the opportunity to provide those developers with the necessary tools and information they need with which to provide projects to us that will fit those overall goals and desires of the town. So kudos. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
Anybody else? So we'll just keep this on the agenda for June fifth, Mr. O'Brien, and then try to wrap it up then.
That's correct.
Anything else?
Nope, not this time.
All right. I don't think we need to take a motion. It's just a workshop item, right?
That's correct.
All right, so I'll go to item four. These are public hearings. These, all of these are continued public hearings. The first item we have is four, five, six. This is map sixty-two, lots thirty-four and eight. This has been before us for some time. The proposal, this is a proposed expansion of the parking cap was sold to town board six. This is continued from April seventeenth. So I see the applicant as well as CNN. So Sarah, if you'd like to speak, go ahead.
Israel, you're good to go.
Hello. Hi, um, we have done what is requested so far regarding cleaning the back there. I've spoke with my landlord and they've took action and near to the water, it's been cleaned. I have a video if you guys want me to, if you guys wish me to show it. And until now, I believe this meeting took longer for the, for a bunch of different reasons, but I think we have brought all the necessary documents and successfully provide everything necessary. So this is where we are.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, and additionally, I provided some photos today as well as a, a memorandum to the board, just kind of refreshing everyone, because I know it's been a while that we've seen the site plan for this project, but I provided some possible language for conditions of decisions. But I will leave that up to the board for any discussion.
So I, after you sent those pitches, I did take a ride down there myself. And just a question for you. You, you sent two aerials, one from March of two thousand and twenty-three, I believe.
Twenty-two.
Right. And then one recently, April fourteenth of this year, I believe.
That's correct. Actually, you're correct. It was twenty twenty-three.
So it doesn't look, it looks like all the debris is still there based on that picture.
That was from April, the work that's been done since April fourteenth. So I provided what it looked like previously. So I would say that the, the cleaning of the area kind of ironically ramped up after those aerial photos.
Other, other, it looks like the stuff to the left with wetline line is.
Only the, only the tires left over there. We spoke with the company. They have a delay. We agreed for one tire for five dollars. They're going to pick it up. And this week, hopefully until the end of week, they should show up and then pick them up. This, this has to be done before. I, I know that and that's how we agreed with the company, but they have a delay and I can't make any.
So there's, there's still a big pile of tires that need to be removed.
Yeah, there's somewhere a hundred fifty tires, two hundred tires, and those are, those are as, as I said, we have agreed with the company to pick them up.
And that's the, 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 the amount of trash and stuff, the, the amount of debris out back, is that all been removed as well or?
Yeah, I can show you guys video if you want me.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing we can do too is if you want to wait till the ties, then we could do a site walk between now and the next meeting and just wrap it up with the next meeting. It's.
When is the next meeting? One more time?
June fifth.
Okay, if, if that makes you guys satisfied, let's do it that way then.
That be, that way you, you have time to get rid of the ties. Do you mind if?
This is, uh, this is not, it is not, uh, I'm throwing something. It's that we have spoke with the company. Why? I don't know. They have a delay. But they, they said that they're going to get it done until end of week, hopefully.
Why don't we wait till that? I mean,
Okay.
Let's, let's, I'll, I'll hear from the rest of the board, but I just, I'm thinking a lot. I shouldn't talk so much. I apologize. Board member comments at this point? It is a public hearing, so questions for the applicant?
No, I, I, I would, I would agree, Pat, just because it's, it's taken so long just to get this place cleaned up. Like to make sure that it's, it's all done and complete.
Okay.
I'm on board with that as well.
Sounds good. Sounds good. Fair enough. Okay, we'll, we'll get that down hopefully in the next meeting. I'll show up and then.
So, so do we have, I mean, if, if, if people want to do a site walk there, do we have permission to go on to the property if?
Yeah.
Let something up?
Well, if you guys want, you guys can set up something anytime or walk through and see what, if there's any concern, anything, just tell us at the time, if you guys wish me to do anything additional, I can, I can take care of it. Hopefully next meeting, we can close the deal.
Is, Mr. O'Brien, I imagine, has all your info?
This is a point of clarification. The applicant is not the owner of the property. I mean, to his credit, he's cleaning it up. But he's cleaning up his landlord's mess, not his mess. But I don't know that he has the authority to authorize a site visit. And, you know, whatever liability is associated with that without consent of the owner.
All right, so why don't we try to do it? If we can't do it, we can't do it. But if we can do it, we can do it. We'll try to wrap it up at the, the fifth. If, if not, so you'll have some evidence that the ties were removed and a video or something if we, if we're not allowed on the property. I mean, the, the, the owner of the property did sign the application, correct?
Correct.
They have part of this process. Okay.
All right, all right.
Yeah, any, any photos you can provide, Israel, or video, if you can send it to me via email to provide to the board, I think that would be extraordinarily helpful.
Okay. Okay, I'll, I'll provide some documents that, that shows what's going.
Thank you. You don't have to show before videos, just afters.
Mr. O'Brien, do you want to see if you can reach out to, if it's the will of the board to reach out to the owner to schedule a site walk?
Nicole can do that. He's been emailing Nicole, so we'll reach out and see if that can be arranged, Mr. Triscoll.
Yeah, and if, if, I'll reach out to board members too of, about availability too. And if we have a quorum, then I'll have to post that site visit.
And Israel, thank you for cleaning it up. So hopefully we can.
It's my pleasure. All right, have a good night.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Oh.
So it's a public hearing. So any other comments from the board? Are there any members of the public that wish to speak on this application?
I do not see any at this time.
I don't see anybody though.
Nope.
Right, so if there's nothing else from the board or from staff, this is thanks from the board. Let, let me know. If anyone would like to speak, if not, we have a motion to continue to June fifth.
So moved.
And Mr. Geller, do we have a second?
Second.
And Miss Rojas, any discussion? Miss Spogano?
Oh, we can.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
The Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Haley, you with us now?
Yes, and yes.
And I mean, yes, okay. Thank you, Israel.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Okay, Mr. O'Brien, moving on. I don't have it in front of me, but we have zero Plymouth Street, map twenty-four, lot fifty-two. I believe we received a request for continuance. Is that?
Yes, we, we received a continuance from the owner of the property requesting that it would be placed on the first meeting of June. That'll be the June fifth meeting.
So we do have that request. Is there a?
I make a motion move that to the June fifth meeting at six thirty.
Geller, is there any, a second?
Second.
Mr. Haley? Any discussion? Mr. Haley?
Yes.
The Geller?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Spogano?
Yes.
Number, yeah, fair question. We have eight fifteen Benson Street, map eighty-eight, lot twenty-three. This is a site from interview under ten point six. For new commercial retail building as well as self-storage facilities and other site improvements. This was continued from April seventeenth. Again, this applicant is, is requesting continuance. I do see the applicant's circumstances here before we continue it. Is there any, I don't know, anything you'd like to say to me or? At this point?
Larry Silva from Silver Engineering Associates. We're currently addressing comments that were raised by the board and from town engineer. And so we, that's why we're asking for the continuance.
And that's the June fifth, correct?
That's correct.
Is there anything from the board or if not, is there a motion?
I've got a motion to move eight fifteen Bedford Street to the June fifth meeting.
Second.
So motion by Mr. Geller, second by Miss Spogano? Any discussion? Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Spogano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Let me ask. Thank you very much. And I apologize if Mr. Carthaus here, I didn't recognize him. I don't see him anywhere, correct?
Nope, not here. I didn't see him.
All right. Item five, we have a new public hearings. This is zero Broad Street. This is map four, lot twenty-two. This is for a special permit under section ten point five. And table of uses, A two, to construct a new duplex dwelling in a residential D zone. Mr. O'Brien, you did send me the note, notice today, which I'll read. On Wednesday, May fifteenth at six thirty P M, the Bridgewater Planning Board will be conducting a public hearing via Zoom on an application by Donald Ellis for a special permit, section ten point five of the Bridgewater zoning ordinance. And, and table of uses, A two, to, to construct a new duplex home in a residential D district located at zero Broad Street. Bridgewater, Mass assesses map four, lot twenty-two. The, the plans are prepared by Land Planning, Inc., and are on file with the town clerk and the C E D office and website. All interested persons are encouraged to attend the Bridgewater Planning Board. And this was advertised on May first and May eighth in the Brockton Enterprise. And on the Bridgewater page. Mr. O'Brien, do we have evidence of the green cards?
Yes, I received them yesterday.
And all the fees have been paid?
That's correct.
So I will open the public hearing. If there is somebody here representing the applicant or the applicant themselves, you feel free to identify yourself and make your presentation.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is Donald Ellis, President.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is Donald Ellis, uh, President and Treasurer of Elko Construction Corporation. On this project, um. For a duplex. On the lot on B. Uh, twenty-two, I believe it is, up on, uh, Bradford Street?
Broad Street.
Broad Street. Um, we sent over some new, the, from the engineer, some, uh, you had questions and, uh, changes that needed to be made. And, um. I don't know. If, uh, you've had a chance to review them. For the plan. Um, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Um, are you, are you able to share the plans on your screen?
Um. I don't think so.
Nothing, Mr.?
No.
No.
Sorry.
We thought you had them in front of you.
But we sent the PDF off.
Right, but you, you guys present the, the, the plans to the board.
Oh, okay. Well, see, I'm not used to doing Zoom. Um, you know, I, yeah, now I gotta, um. You know, um, apologize for this, but everything is zoomed. It's, uh, usually I'm, uh, you know, in, in the audience with the, with the boards and stuff are going over and presenting it. Um, so.
The engineer, okay, um. Uh, hi, this is, um, Kathy Marini. I'm with, um, Elko Construction. The engineer did not send us the new PDF that he sent to Shane yesterday. Um. So. Uh, I don't have the ability to present it to you this evening.
Can you present us the original plan?
Um.
Yes.
I do have a PDF of that. I believe I can. I have technical help here with me, so.
Sure, we're able to, if we're able to allow you to share the screen. But yeah, we can, we can comment on the original plan submitted.
Can you email it to me? Yeah. I'm not used to this one here. I wanna go to his, um, scent. Maybe, oh, to his. Okay. And where is the email and how do you? It would be under.
This park meeting. Oh, that's not.
No.
It would have come from, uh, land planning, correct?
Yes. But it would be the original one. Gonna be way down, Don.
Yeah.
Can we just search for land planning? Yeah, is that what it's called?
Yeah, land planning.
Steve, Steve Rye?
You, you don't have to put the name in. Just land planning.
Land?
Planning.
Which one is it?
Yep.
No, those are all. Those are Tony.
At any point you're able to share your screen, um, using the share feature.
Yep, we do not. Um, I'm just trying to get it to my email, sorry.
No problem.
Shane, you know, I, we might have to continue this to the next meeting anyway, based on some staff comments and some questions that the board may have.
Sure.
Do, do you want? I guess, I guess for clarification, um, why they're looking for that, it, assuming the board members have reviewed it, do we wanna? Start, you know, is it okay to, we'll start asking Mr. Tansey some questions? And if they can bring that up, we can, we can bring that up.
This is, sure.
Mr. O'Brien, Shane?
Yes.
So why are they working on that? I just, I, I had some questions for, for Mr. Tansey. I don't know if it's appropriate to ask him now without the plan in front of.
Um. Yeah, I think it's fine if you would like to ask Mr. Tansey, um, just to discuss his comments.
Sure.
So Greg, I just, a couple of questions I had on the plan. It's pretty straightforward, but, um.
Well, I can send.
It's a tough site elevation wise. In the back, it looks like the driveway goes. From an elevation, the bottom of driveway, one seventeen to one twenty-three. And that's above the wall, um. Is that, is that wall, the, I know we, in our zoning, we allow the walls to be up to sixty, I believe, correct? But should it be offensive on the top of that wall? Should that be a structural wall? That should, should have fallen. Are you, are you okay with that?
Um, yeah, I, I would. Say it's probably better off. Being some type of a structural wall, um.
It is, it is, it is, it is, uh, one twenty-three is the finished elevation. Up against the house and it's one seventeen point four at the bottom. So if you have a four inch lip. Or a three inch lip, that's gonna be a six foot wall. I just, I didn't know if you were satisfied with boulders or they should terrace those boulders or, or what? It should be offensive if it's a straight six foot because you don't want.
Yeah, I, I would definitely put some type of a, a safety chain link fence. Um, along the top of a, the wall. Um, a, a boulder wall. If it's, if it's six feet, that's kind of high for a, for a boulder wall. You'd have to have a really. Uh, good, um. Uh, batter slope to that wall, something like maybe two to one or one and a half to, to one. If you were to do a, a, a boulder wall. Um, you could terrace it if you, you know, so desired. Um, that, that would be acceptable too. So there's a, there's a number of options. But. Generally speaking, I think you'd probably be better off with a, a structural wall here. Just to, um, eliminate any potential of erosion and, and the, um. You know, the, the, um. Sliding of boulders. Or having some type of a, um. You know, er, er, erosion of that wall. I mean, six feet is kind of high for, for a boulder retention wall. So I would prefer to see something of a, a structural content.
And, yeah, we can look at that once the plan's up. Um, you know, one of the other questions I had to. Just, this may, and here they come with the, the plan.
One fourteen is down by one sixteen, so I don't, I don't think it's six feet.
Yeah, could you, could you spin that, sir? Of the, if it, if it, if it, there's a.
Right click and then.
Right click.
Um, I think I have to get out of share. Hold on.
Sure.
Let me see that, why?
Is it? If you download it. And then you go into where Adobe PDF is, you'll be able to rotate it.
Okay, I will do that.
Cool.
Let's see, that's one sixteen. And you want, listen. Once, being one fourteen, it's two, one twenty-two. Is to here, that's the top of the wall.
Right.
Here at one sixteen here. Four. That's where they get, that's where they get in the six.
Yeah, they get, well. Could be four plus the two. Right?
And sixteen plus four is one twenty, plus two, yeah, so that's.
Okay, here I go.
This point. Yeah.
Hmm.
So it is six feet from that point.
And this is why we're all together today.
Yeah, yeah.
There you go. Here it comes.
Yeah.
There you go.
Thank you.
Blow it up a little bit. If, if you can, yeah.
No, I can. Um, I was afraid that you weren't gonna be able to see it if I did. Um.
It's alright, it's, it's fine. You can go.
It's, it's okay.
Well, you can go with that. So go ahead, go ahead. You can make your presentation up.
Okay. Go ahead.
Well, we have not, we, we don't have a problem of doing some sort of fencing if it's, if it's, if it ends up being that high. Uh. As it in, as it indicates, that's not an issue. That can be a site change. Once, once the wall goes in. And, um. Cause it, you know, um, we can put a fence along the top.
Okay, do you wanna, I just, we're using my time just to ask some generic questions. Do you wanna give an overview of the project and then we can ask the board to ask questions, so?
Sure.
They want an overview of the project.
Um. Yeah, some of the, I, I don't know if you wanted to address some of the questions that came in from some of the, uh. Butters, uh. Or the, the overall project is just going to be a duplex. Um, condo, uh, two bedroom each, um. Living room, dining room, garage unders. Uh, the septic system's been, been approved by the Board of Health. Um, for, for four bedrooms, which is two for each unit. Um, which can't match, can't go any further than that. Um, the layout, yeah, the house itself, the duplexes itself was set back on the lot, so it won't be so, uh. Close to the existing house on the left side coming, looking at the property. Um. And so that there'll be some privacy for both. Um. Let's see. Uh, the drainage is all set by D O T for the water. Um, coming down from the driveway with the, the swales. Um. I don't know, what, what other questions you might have?
So, so another question I had in addition to the wa, the wall is just something I think we should be mindful of. It's just, it's just showing boulders and it's six feet in height, so. You know, I, I'm not an engineer, so if that's structurally okay, that's okay, but. We might need some sort of a safety fence or a six foot drop like that, so. Um, the, the other question I had, you said the septic system's approved. Has, has this plan?
We. Interrupt you, but we will do that.
Uh, yeah, the, the question I have in the septic system, and I know it's out of our purview, but it may. It may change grading and, and whatnot, but. Typically, everything I've seen in Bridgewater in terms of a duplex, there's been one tank and one field for each unit. Has this, has this? Proposal been discussed with the Board of Health in regards to the septic system now serving two different households?
Yes, it's always been that way. Since, uh, we, we filed with this, with the, with the, uh, perk test and so on was, was that way. Uh.
What, what year was that, sir?
Oh. I don't know. I don't have that in front of me.
Um, was it a number of years? It's just, I've, I've never seen it. I've, I've just never seen it. So if, 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 if the Board of Health is up, is fine with it, I.
Yeah, I, I ran into Eric Badger, um, today and I asked him this question. So I'll give a, a verbal of kind of. So typically they would allow, they ask for two, but in, in certain cases, they do allow for one system. Um, however. The, what they would do is that they would make sure that it would be tied, there'd be some language tied to the deed. Um, regarding the homeowners association, um, Pat. Um, so, so that would. Prevent issues of, um, emptying of. The septic tanks if, in case for the issue of, um. Two pe, two parties that aren't fond of each other.
So, so he, one, one tank even is the, and I.
Well, it was, it was stated, it was two tanks. From my understanding, you could do one, but with two tanks.
And I don't wanna get into the septic system. Debate. It's just, I wanted to make, if, if they needed another field, it may change grading.
Yeah, and we can, and I can, if, if we're looking to continue this, we can make that as a point of clarification.
Field wouldn't change. Not, but.
You want to look at them?
Yeah, that's fine if they wanna put a separate tank in. Uh, it's just a matter of where it's gonna locate. Um, but it, it has to go into the one system. So when you have the one system. Uh, the, the solid, solids have got to stay in the tank and then the liquid's gotta go down to the D box. So that would be probably. The reason they probably allowed it was it makes more sense. I'm not sure. I'd have to go back and ask her. We did meet with her a while ago, a few months. I don't know how long ago it was, but, and. She was fine with everything, but. I'm not sure. If there needs to be a change, it's not a problem. With, with one tank. My opinion is that. It, uh, will get cleaned out more than it would be if it was two tanks there. And, uh. Through the association.
Yeah, I think that's, that's between the Board of Health. I just, I just wanted to make sure that. If you did need another field that. We addressed it before we closed out the hearing because it may change. There's a lot of grading on the site and. You'd have to locate where that would go and it could change grading. That, that's all. Um, water line, we got a comment from the water department that one shown, you're gonna need two water lines, correct? Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, and I think, uh, the updated plans do, uh, address that. Um, so I, I'm sure we can. Receive those updated comments from water and DPW once, uh, those plans are reviewed.
And the, the grading on the front, is that a two to one slope, a three to one slope? I just, it looks like it goes from one sixteen to one ten, one, one oh eight real quick. Is that? Is that, um? Greg, is that stable in your opinion? Is that adequate sloping?
Um, yeah, I believe it is. It's.
And then the last question I wrote down was typically for a special permit, we ask for architectials. Did we receive any architectials for the building?
Not at this time, we haven't.
Do you have any that you could submit or?
Um.
No, we don't have any.
We, 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 we don't have anything at all drawn up for. Um, this is what we're planning on doing is, is the, uh. The di, dimensions would be twenty wide by forty deep each one, which was a total of forty by forty square with, uh, garage unders. Um, because of this, the, uh. The height of everything. Works out a lot better. Um. I, uh. I don't know if that answers your question.
Other board members? Question?
The colonial and style, I mean, we.
I, I have, um. I have one more based off a, um. About this comment. Um, they're referring to a, uh, I mean, I see the frontage is one oh four, so it, it. It doesn't have the appropriate frontage, but it does have the appropriate area, twenty-two thousand square feet. Um. The, 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 um, I find a lot of these. A lot of it was from the president of Michael Slaving. Referencing a variance needed. Is, is this before Z B A for a variance?
Mr. Solari, would you like to address this?
Yes, I'd address this. This is a legal non-conforming lot, one and two family. And it is, uh, allowed by right. The lots allowed by right. We're going for the special permit because. At one time, special permits were approved by the Z B A, which that's where they should be, but now they're in the planning board. Uh, I just wanna make a couple of comments because I'm listening to this and I'm going kind of crazy because. The, this builder could have just come in and pulled a permit. For a house. Not, not needed anything about walls, not needed anything about fencing, not needed anything about septic. So I'm a little confused because it is a one and two family dwelling. It is not a commercial property. It's a one and two family dwelling, which usually does not fall into the planning, but this is a new thing that we, that is being done. So I, I just wanna say that if they're coming in for a special permit because that, the two family, uh, ordinance has gone from Z B A to planning. Um, I just wish that you guys in the plan would realize, again, two family dwelling, landscaping, grades. It is a two-family residential home, one and two family. So just so you know, it, it, it's a very strange meeting to me. I, I've never, I've never seen this kind of meeting for a two-family ever. So I'm just wanna give you my opinion.
Yeah, and I, I agree. We've never done this, but I just wanna make sure, like, my main concern is the wall, but that six foot wall, that's all.
Is it a wall or is it? Is it a wall or is it a grade?
It's a wall. There's a, there's a wall in the back that's about six feet high. It's just showing bulbous, that's all.
And just so you know, in the uh, building code. Walls do, do not require, residential walls do not require fencing. They do not require, they could be twenty feet high. They don't require a fence.
All right, all right, we're good to know.
Yep.
All right, um, anybody else on the board, the staff? Any public comments? We can open up to the public. Are there any members in the public here that would like to speak?
Uh, just wanna note in front of the board, I did uh, receive public comment um, from in a butter. Um, I did forward that along to the board members. Um, to you guys, uh. Um, for you to review.
Yeah. And that's, I did read that, that letter, um, and that's the one that referenced the variance. The wire is confused. So I didn't know if they're writing that letter to ZBA or to us. Um, and that was from the um. Condo Association at Michael's Landing.
Correct.
All right.
So hi, I'm, I'm Sharon Mutry, so I am President of Michael's Landing. I guess this is. Something new for us as well, so lack of knowledge, so I do apologize. But the only question I would have really is, we are um, a direct of butter. Where we have our directly, our property lines meet each other. So, I was just wondering if Mr. Ellis could just let us know what things would be. Um, especially since Michael's Landing is below where this building is gonna be happening, so any type of debris coming over or. Coming into our property is, are they making some arrangements that um, that will be dealt with?
Oh, a, absolutely. Um, which property are you? And I'm not familiar, that a right or the left or?
Michael's Landing behind.
Oh, oh, yeah, the condo project.
The condo, the condo association, so it's. So we're below, we're, we're gonna be below you as you're, you're building, because you guys are above us. So easily, you know, it looks like, and again, lack of knowledge, I do apologize. But it looks like you're gonna be taking some trees down and things like that, and. Just to make sure those, that's not coming into our property and what, what protections. That you would have, because it, it is, it seems to me like a small lot, but I could, again, could be wrong on that.
Forty-six feet away.
Yeah, you're forty-six feet away, you wouldn't be.
Yeah. It's uh, forty-six feet away from, the, the rear of the property is forty-six feet away from the building itself. Um, which we don't plan on doing anything. Um, there is a wall on the other end. But, that's, it's all pitched the other way. No, I don't expect you to have any problem at all. Uh, we aren't cutting a lot of trees, only what's necessary. Um, the right-hand side. Um.
It's just behind here.
But just behind here, yeah, there's, there's no way anything's gonna come down that way. That I'm aware of in, in the construction process.
Okay, so that's, that is also our concern too, because we are on the right-hand side of you. We do have a piece of land there. That there's no houses on or anything, that we are between the other house on the right-hand side. So just in the sense of.
What, what I can, what can I, what, what I can address from a, a town standpoint is that. Um. And the applicant shouldn't or couldn't encroach your property during the construction period. Debris and all sorts of construction has to be maintained on the site. If there's issues of trespass, that's gonna be a, a, a matter between two private parties. Um, but in terms of this decision-making, we can. Make sure that the applicant stays on their property with typical conditions that we would. Have for any um, project.
And I just get a point of clarification, I mean. Based on what Mr. Solari said, does this application even need to be before the planning board?
It's a special permit for, before the planning board in accordance with. Table of uses A two.
It, it used to go, it used to go to ZBA. This is the first one we've had before us. It used to go. Bobrovsky's rewrite changed it. It used to go to ZBA just for a presser review of the site, and now it's been sent to us.
Okay.
Um, this is the first one we've done.
Thank you.
But M, Mr. Solari, so what you're saying though is, is that. And it's, I, I learned something, so as far as residential walls and structural walls on a residential one and two-family property. There is no code or law that over a certain height, there needs to be fencing, and we do not need to be worried about the height. Or the structural integrity of that wall, is that correct?
The building code, the building code reads, any wall that's over four feet has to be engineered. So as far, if they do put in a, a wall that's over four feet, it requires a building permit, a separate building permit from the house for the wall. And it has to be structurally engineered. So if, if, if the wall is that tall, then it'll have to be approved by an engineer. That's why you don't see boulder walls that tall. They're usually done out of structural material, structural blocks, because a boulder wall cannot be structurally approved. Um, the fencing, correct? We, in residential, it's not required. Um, grading on residential is, you know. Is, is as is, um.
Well, even, even on subdivisions now, we ask for a grading plan for, for lots. So I mean.
Right, because.
I think, I think we're looking at this like, gonna do your lot just to make sure the grades. Meet our zoning and, and our rules and regs, you know, no more, that's why I asked about the front, because I think we have a. I think we have an ordinance that says you can't have more than a three-to-one slope and, and things of that nature. The, the interesting thing to me is. I'm shocked to see any type of drainage on here. I don't know if that's required by DEP because. Stormwater management doesn't kick in until one to four, it's a four units, is that correct, Mr. Tanzi?
Yep, yep. Stormwater management is not required for uh, residential one and two-family homes.
So is this drainage, is this drainage a function of the, of the curb cut, uh, application? Was that required by the state?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, the, the state doesn't want a lot of water running onto their main road, and that's the reasons they have that. Uh, retention here for that. Drainage. In a storm.
So, so, so Mr. Brian, if we're looking at this from a grading standpoint, right, and all the comments we received, you know, water lines need to be two water lines. They have to get a permit from Board of Health anyway, for the septic system, whether it's one, two, or three tanks, right?
Correct.
And then, if, if we're okay with the. With the grading, I mean, that's basically what we're looking at, and Mr. Solari is saying. We have no purview over the wall. That's more of a building function, is that correct, Mr. Solari? If it's over four feet, you're gonna require.
It's, it's, it's under the purview of the building department. Like I said, one and two families usually handled by the building department or the zoning board of appeals. So that's why uh, it's a little strange with the, with. All the, the viewing of this, because again, if, if Mr. Ellis had come to me and said, I wanna build a single-family home. He would just be building it to whatever plan he sends to me.
Right, but, 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 but we also have to issue a decision, so a special.
Oh, no, no, I understand. I, I know because of the way, because of the rewrite, because I've been here seven and a half years, this past rewrite has changed it. Um, in the past year and a half.
So I mean, add, add, add decision should reflect, you know, what we discussed, that the. The wall should be paid, paid attention to, the grading should adhere to the plan. Um, the additional water line should be added per the, per the, the water department. The septic system should be reviewed and approved by the, by the. Board of Health.
Yeah, what I would say would be outside, i- it doesn't preclude any other department's review of this, you know, our purview is. Specific to special permit standards as well as the allowance for. A duplex to be built in the residential day. It doesn't preclude any other review from Water. DPW, Health, with building, et cetera, et cetera.
I mean, our, our review is the site, and I think that's what we were focusing on, correct?
Correct.
All right, so I'll open it back. Are there any, I, I know um, the president of Michael's Landing spoke. Do you have anything else to add, ma'am, or is there anybody else who'd like to speak?
Uh, I don't see any other virtual hands raised, Pat, nor anyone in the chat.
Yeah. So, Mr. Brian, how do we wanna proceed with this? Mr. Tanzi, are, are you comfortable with the site of that? I mean.
Well, I, what I would say is that we did receive updated plans, and the board did receive updated plans per Mr. Tanzi's comments. Um. Yesterday, or I, I've sent them over today. So, I would ask that the board, if they haven't, if you haven't reviewed those plans, have the opportunity to review those plans. Um, they're very, very minor changes, so if the board feels that. We would condition an approval based on the updated plans. Um, that's appropriate. Um, as well as if there's any comments or changes that need to be implemented. As part of any other departmental review that the application come back before here for a modification for a special permit. That would require uh, an additional public hearing if a modification's required, just to let the board know.
So, so, Mr. Tanzi, have you had a chance to review this new plan?
I have not. I've been out at meetings most of the day, and I've been out in the, in the field, and I was just not able to. Um, get a chance to review the updated plan.
Right, I think maybe Mr. Brian, we can work on a decision order, you know, a decision order should point out our concerns on the site, that, you know, if the wall's over certain. Height limit, it has to adhere to certain regulations. The grading should be good too, so maybe you can work on a draft.
Yeah, what I can say is if we were looking to continue this to the June fifth meeting, that maybe we place this first on the agenda. Um, it just seems like it's a very minute sort of situation, so if that's appropriate, um. We can pursue that.
Okay. Um, from the applicant, are you okay with that? Is there anything, anything else we'd like to discuss?
Uh. No, I, I'll go along with it. Um. If there's some minor changes that need to be done, we can do them, uh. Even afterwards, if uh, something's on the site that needs to be attended to. That's not an issue.
As well as I'll draft up some decision language for the board.
All right.
If the permits were fired for the wall, we would certainly.
Yeah. If, if there's anything that comes up, oh, that we don't normally see, you know, I stand behind the products, I guarantee them for ten years, but. Um. Anyway, but I won't go back into the history of the company.
Well, well, I'll, Mr. Tanzi looked at it, maybe he can make some uh, suggestions in terms of uh, engineering and with the walls, et cetera.
Yeah, I would say that most of the comments had been, I think, there was a very small amount of comments, so I think they could be properly addressed by the next meeting.
Also.
All right, so if there's no more public comment, no more board comment, do we have a motion to continue us to June fifth?
Some move.
Second?
So, motion by Mr. Gallagher, second by uh, Ms. Rojas, um.
Miss Spagon.
Ms. Spagon, yeah.
All right, any discussion? Ms. Spagon?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher? Yes. Haley?
Yes.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, that was, we've never done one of those before, so I, I mean, like, ashamed, do we have a checklist? Typically for, for. You know, um, site plans and special permits, we have a checklist.
Yeah, we included, we included some language with typical special permit standards that we're supposed to review as part of. Um, as part of the memorandum that we provided, but it does. It does get into a category of still being a little extensive for what uh, miniscule action this is. Um, but this is something definitely we'll have to pursue specific to. Either planning board review of duplexes or just in.
I mean, we, we, in, in the zoning, it says we can develop special permit. You know, processes and criteria.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to do, I think we're gonna have to do that for duplexes.
Maybe we should come up with, you know, we want a site plan, we want architectials, we want, and it's a very limited site plan, it's like a limited site plan review as opposed to the. The full-blown, because I also, you know, just, whatever you think going forward, you know, the next couple of months or whatever.
Okay.
It, it does seem like a, a big review for a. For one lot, you know, and, and what, what used to be as a great, so. All right, um. All right, so continuing on, um, item. Six, we have a preliminary subdivision plan. Um, I know the applicant wanted to discuss eighty-four, um. South Street, seventy-five Lot One. This is a preliminary subdivision plan for a three-lot subdivision uh, with, with waivers requested in residential C. So if the applicant, yeah.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, um, for the record, Eric Dias, registered professional engineer with Strongpoint Engineering. Uh, representing the applicant at eight eighty-four South Street tonight. Um, if we're ready to go, I'm glad to share my screen and walk you guys through this. Um, it's.
Are, are you able to?
I am able to.
Bless your soul.
Haha. Um, I have a fair amount of experience with this one. Um, you know, I'm gonna start down here because I think this one might show things a little bit better on the second sheet, uh, just as far as what we're actually. Proposing to develop here. So this lot exists um, on. I'm sorry? I think that was just some feedback. Um, on South Street, sandwiched between Jennifer Circle and Winter Street over here. Um, it's about a ninety thousand square foot lot in, in residential C-zone. Where eighteen thousand five hundred square feet is required, so it's definitely. An oversized lot, maybe one of the last in the area. Um, it houses an existing dwelling that has recently been renovated, um, and is being occupied at this time. Um, the land is reasonably flat, although it does slope gently uh, to the rear of the property. And though we have not done test pits on-site at this time, we have checked. Um, neighboring records and NRCS mapping data, and things do look favorable. Um, so we wanted to come before you folks, just to have a preliminary discussion. Um, about what we're proposing, which is a three-lot subdivision. Um, the existing dwelling will remain. We are proposing a right-of-way, uh, forty feet wide. Uh, with a sixteen-foot pavement width, which is allowed in your bylaw for one to four residences. Um, and we would be then therefore creating lots one. And lot two, uh, they are intended, intended for single-family homes. Uh, for this particular development, we feel that it gives a, a really nice community. Uh, type of feel with limiting disturbances and, and things like that, all of the. Things that we certainly try to accomplish when we do something like this. Um, all of the lots are zoning compliant. Um, and with the exception of a very few waivers that we'd like to discuss. Um, we're, we're right there on subdivision control compliance as well. Um. One of the, i- i- let me stop by saying this as well, we acknowledge that at the preliminary plan stage. Waivers are not granted, right? So we, we wrote up the waiver request as if. You know, what we're anticipating, we would be requesting if this moves to a definitive um. Plan stage. Um, so the, the biggest waiver, I think that we're requesting is with regard to the cul-de-sac bulb. Um, I did have an opportunity to read Mr. O'Brien's staff report, and he did call this one out in particular. Um, in the town, a hundred and thirty-foot diameter bulb is required. We are requesting a waiver to bring it down to a hundred feet. Um, and the reasoning behind it is simply this. Um, we are utilizing the hammerhead-style layout, which fits completely within a hundred-foot. Uh, diameter ball rather than the hundred and thirty-foot. Uh, the hundred and thirty-foot is usually driven by a rounded cul-de-sac, right? Uh, we don't have that in this case, so frankly, we don't need. The extra space within the right-of-way. It kind of becomes dead space at the end of the day. Uh, but just to kind of explore alternatives, we did look into a couple of alternatives on this, and I know I haven't submitted this to the record, but I just wanted to bring it up quickly to show you. Um, this is an alternative for what a hundred-foot ball, excuse me, a hundred and thirty-foot diameter cul-de-sac would look like. Uh, if it's on the site, it is zoning compliant, it is subdivision compliant, uh, we have the same type of hammerhead-style. Roadway that comes through here, but what we end up having ultimately is two separate and longer driveways. So now we're having more pavement, more disturbance. We still end up with an HOA. We still end up with the same number of houses, things like that. Um, so while it could be done.
I mean, you said the lots are compliant. Are you, are you meeting a hundred and twenty-five feet at the thirty-five-foot setback?
Um, I believe we are. And I can certain, um, and we, I believe Bridgewater has a. Uh, no, excuse me. Bridgewater has a bylaw that you can push that setback, that front setback back until you can make that on a cul-de-sac.
It has to be, it has to be met, it has to be met at the, at the setback line. So that's.
I don't believe.
Yeah.
Well, we can certainly, that's further, I don't believe that's the way. Well, we can certainly, further, I don't believe that's the way that reads.
That, no, that, but Mr. Salar can confirm that, it's, it's, it has to be, it says the front yard setback line.
Is Mr. Salar on the call?
Yeah, you are correct, Pat. Yeah, there's, we have a diagram of at the, at the, uh, is that AB?
That's, that's C, but it should.
RC, yeah, so at, at the forty-foot, at the forty-foot radius.
Yeah, thirty-five.
Back.
Right.
I mean, C, yeah.
Okay.
You have, so it's a hundred and fifty-five feet, you have to meet the radius.
Yeah, it's at the front, front yard setback line.
Yeah.
Okay, well, then that's my mistake and I'll, I'll pull that back, um, but just to say that we did consider. Um, alternatives, you know, they don't really end up looking as good if they are possible and certainly with a setback. Um, we could request relief and all of that, but we'd really rather not go down that road if we certainly don't have to do that. So, um, the other thing.
Can you go back to drawing?
Sure.
Because it's actually a question that I had, one, one of the questions that I had was. Could you get, could you do a subdivision and get one lot that complied with everything? And would that, would that give you a hundred? So, so. I guess when we look at waivers, right, we have to, we have to do what's in the public good and, and justify it. Alright, so. If, 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 could you, so in a, in that zone, I believe it's a hundred and fifty feet. You would need for a duplex dwelling, right? So could you, could you comply with your hundred and thirty-foot radius and get a duplex lot there?
Um, I believe we can, just looking at the basic math here, right, if we've got a length on this side of ninety-five feet roughly. And a length on this side of fifty feet roughly, that's a hundred and forty-five feet, we push that back to the thirty-foot setback line, we're right on that edge. Um, we're right on that edge of being able to do that, you know, duplex. In this case, or a single-family lot, or I know there was a duplex mentioned in the, um. The, in, in the staff report, you know, it's, it's certainly not our preference. Uh, we really like to create a, a small neighborhood here, um, I don't think the market may necessarily be the same for duplexes, but at the end of the day.
And I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm just trying to say, you know, if, if we are to, because I think it's a pretty big waiver, right, we don't want to open a can of worms. But I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to think out loud and say if you could demonstrate that you could apply, that you could comply with. A duplex lot, which would give you two dwelling units anyway. That could, that could be justification potentially for the waiver, you know what I mean? That, that's all, that's all, I'm just trying to think out loud, that's all.
Yeah, and that's actually exactly where I was going with this, right? So whether we had. If we keep the existing house and go with two new proposed single families. Or we keep the existing house and go with a new proposed duplex, we still end up having. Three dwelling units, right, on the same property. Um, over ninety thousand square feet, that's about thirty thousand square feet per dwelling unit. Which area-wise is a hundred and sixty percent roughly of what the bylaw requirement is. So, end of the day, you know, the math seems to make sense. Um, to go with the single families, I do think it's more desirable here. Um, the other thing, yeah, just two more points I'll make, one about a duplex is. It would end up being condoed at some point, right? Not a planning board thing, but an HOA thing, it would be condoed. There would be lines of division drawn, there would be exclusive area limits drawn, things like that, so. Effectively, it ends up sort of being three lots, but more importantly, um. I do know that this board has granted this waiver in the past. Um, there is an example over on Garnet Place, for example, uh, that actually goes to a ninety-foot diameter. With a similar layout. Um, so I know, I, I believe, Mr. Driscoll, you, you mentioned possibly opening a can of worms, things like that. I would just remind the board that, you know, waivers are on a case-by-case basis, um, and if they, if it's been done in the past. I don't think we're really risking opening up a, a can of worms, if it makes sense. Um, and I think from a numbers perspective, when we talk about density, when we talk about area of the cul-de-sac. And why the bulb is under the regulation supposed to be a hundred and thirty-foot. Um, you know, knowing that that has to do primarily with a paved turnaround, uh, excuse me, a paved round turnaround. And that's not what we're proposing here, I think. I believe that that waiver makes some sense, I understand why the board is pensive about it. Um, but that's my, that's my pitch for it, that's where I stand.
Is there any? I see that that cul-de-sac goes right up to a. Another parcel with. With. Extra area, uh, sixty-eight thousand, fifty-eight thousand, fifty-eight thousand, yeah, butter. Are there any plans to add another lot at the end of this cul-de-sac?
Uh, we have no plans at all, in fact, one of, the second waiver we, we requested. Um, is that your bylaw requires a twenty-foot easement be provided. Um, at the end of a cul-de-sac bulb, just for that eventuality. Um, and we're requesting a waiver to eliminate that easement because we have no intention of doing that, no intention of extending this road at any time. Um, the other thing too is if this road was to eventually ever. Serve more than these three units, uh, it would very, it would certainly have to come back before this board. Um, and it's very, very possible. Um, that we would be required at that time to upgrade pavement widths and things like that, um, so I don't think that's a can of worms that we're trying to open.
Okay, board questions or comments?
Um, if I can, can I just touch on two additional waiver requests that we have, I'll group them together, be real quick. Um, we have requested a waiver from street trees and street light requirements, uh, general. Reasoning is this, where we're trying to create a small community here, and this is going to remain a private way. We thought and we would like to be able to give the residents and the members of the HOA. The ability and the opportunity to pick things that they like, right? They may have a certain landscape that they want to use. They may have certain street lights, perhaps they'd rather use post lights uh at the end of their driveways, things like that, so we, we simply requested that waiver. Um, considering this is a private street to give the homeowners or eventual homeowners some degree of flexibility. Um, so that's, that's it, that's my whole pitch, and I'm glad to answer any questions that you folks have.
Any, um, board questions at this point? Well, to fly away from other board members, I'll just, uh, so, Mr. Diaz, I. I, just to help me, you know. Waivers, we have to justify that they're in the public good, right? So. I just, it, it would be helpful for me in considering this. If you could show that. Compliance with. The cul-de-sac requirement, getting these three dwelling units, so if that's. Showing what you had before with one duplex lot there. That isn't, and, and all the lots are in compliance and, and the, and the uh radius is there, that would, that would, that would certainly help me in. Considering the, the, um, the waiver for the cul-de-sac diameter.
Sure, absolutely, actually, give me half a second, I'm getting a text from my client. Um, I'm gonna stop my share for a minute because he just emailed me something, I'm pretty sure he's sitting in front of his computer drafting things right now. Um, if I.
I mean, yeah, you can, I mean, I think we should have it looked at, you, you can bring it up now, but it's okay.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, we can definitely have it looked at, but just, oh, yeah, that's what he just sent me, uh, give me just half a second to pull this up. Uh, duh, 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 yeah, okay. Let me go back to the share. Uh, okay, so we are sharing the screen now, so this is, um, exactly that plan, um, it, it appears to me, just looking at this. That we've got the hundred and thirty-foot diameter here, and we've got a length here of a hundred and fifty on this cul-de-sac, on this, this radius here. Which gives us the frontage that we need. Um, and then I'm just looking through here. And certainly this lot would maintain frontage both on South Street and on the paper road. Um, so it looks like, yeah, we could certainly come in. Um, and submit, in application for a special permit for a duplex, similar to your last case. Um, and potentially walk out of this with three dwelling units. Um, I think it just comes down to a matter of what's the best. Most practical, most desirable, most marketable way to, to split those three dwelling units up, and I would suggest. You know, that, that granting that waiver, um, certainly doesn't do any detriment to the public good. Um, it, it certainly doesn't set precedent, it does not, um, derogate from, from any of your powers. Um, because it is on a case-by-case basis, and in this case, you know, my argument frankly is that it makes some sense.
No, this, to me, this helps a lot, so if you could submit this and we could look at it, that, I mean, that. With the dimensions on it, I mean, that, this, this helps, this is helpful, so thank you.
Absolutely, yeah, I will upload this to Perimeterize tomorrow.
Are there any other board questions at this point? Staff comments?
Oh, Greg, go ahead.
Oh, uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I do have. Uh, one particular comment is that in this area. We do have very high groundwater tables and it is. Um, a problematic area from, from a standpoint of. Um, runoff, particularly, um, in the winter. Um, house number thirty-four, Winter Street, has, um. Uh, has a sump pump. And, you know, he pumps out into the, into his backyard. It's a very flat yard back there. And, um, some of the runoff. From the area of Lot Two of this subdivision winds up in his backyard, and then it. It flows. Uh, eastward and is picked up by. The driveway leading to that retreat lot, which is number forty, Winter Street. And this all winds up onto Winter Street, and we've had. Um. A, a, a very bad freezing condition going from. Uh, say thirty-four, Winter Street. Down, going towards. Uh, Route eighteen. Where it's picked up by a catch basin, the catch basin is probably. I don't know, I, I'm gonna say about. Hundred and fifty feet or so to. To the east of, um, the retreat driveway, but that stretch. Of, uh, that hundred and fifty-foot, call it, stretch of Winter Street. Ices, the, the gutter ices. Um, at some point, the road actually. Uh, further on down becomes super elevated and you've got a sheet flow going across Winter Street. And when, when you, when a sump pump goes on and it causes this, this discharge. Uh, in the winter, it, it flows. You know, even under, when the temperature is below thirty-two. And it eventually winds up icing and freezing, so the highway department has had. Uh, a lot of calls in this area. It's been problematic, they have been, um. You know, putting a lot of ice down. Um, there is a solution that, you know, a drainage improvement that could be done. Um, it might, um. You know, require excavation in the right-of-way of, of Winter Street. But it's, it's my. I, I would venture to say that you've got a, a very high groundwater table out here on the site. The existing dwelling on the site, I was curious if, if it has a, um. A basement water problem, if, if they also do a lot of pumping. Um, uh, but I think we have to at a minimal, take. A good, hard look at the groundwater situation and make sure that. Um, there's adequate provision for, um, retention and recharge. Um. Drainage impoundments, being able to drain dry without having to exacerbate the problem. That's already out there on Winter Street. So, I mean. I, yeah, so I mean, that, that's something that we need.
So Greg, your, your comment brings a, a question to mind, looking at this, so. I mean, I know we're looking at very limited information, but. Mr. Dias, are you also requesting a waiver from the, um. The swale design, the drainage on either side of the road with infiltration, it looks like, is the road just pitching back to a. To a, to a proposed drainage area, we, we, we haven't allowed, we don't allow that, we have it on the roadside swales, is that?
Right.
You know, stone strip, it doesn't, and that'll have infiltration in it as well?
Yep, that'll have infiltration and the proposed drainage area we're showing at the end is just kind of a catch-all. Um, obviously, yes, to, to Greg's point, we, again, we're preliminary, uh, we certainly have some. Sizing to do and things like that, we've done enough that we feel confident that. You know, between preliminary and definitive, nothing earth-shattering is going to change, we, we do believe that we can pull this off, certainly. Um, and I did actually, as, as Mr. Tansy was talking, I did receive a text from my client, um, they, it shows you what I know. Uh, they, they actually did do some test pits out here, uh, that were witnessed by Eric Badger. Uh, soil materials are fairly decent, ten-minute per inch perk, somewhat high groundwater table in this location. Um, but it's certainly things that we can work with. Um, so point taken, absolutely, if this thing gets more real than this, something that we're gonna have to consider and keep an eye on. Um, I, I will note that, you know, I, I think it was mentioned earlier, between one to four. Uh, single-family homes, state stormwater doesn't necessarily apply, but certainly. We don't want to do something that just doesn't work or just makes the situation worse, so that's. We will deal with it.
I, I think you start, I mean, our requirements are still, you have to meet the pre and the post and the, the ten percent reduction, right? So. That, that the stormwater still applies to the one to four in, in, in our regs.
Yes.
Alright, any other, um. Any other questions from the board or staff at this point?
No, like I said, we have provided a memorandum to, uh, Mr. Dias, um. And that kind of addresses some of our concerns, uh, I think that the, the waiver request for the street trees aren't gonna fly. Uh, I know I do appreciate Mr. Dias' comments that. Uh, the people in the, uh, private associations would have a choice. No, 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 uh, it's our call, um, so I, I would advise that, uh, you would. Provide some street trees, uh, based on the street trees list that we have within our subdivision rules and regulations.
Yeah, the other, I mean, the other thing that I, it's outside, you know, I, I don't see how two one-inch water lines down the road are gonna fly, you know, the, the. I imagine the water department's gonna want the eight-inch main. We have on all the other subdivisions.
Well, we, we will certainly, uh, again, starting point, you know, glad to have that conversation with the water department and whatever they require is what they require.
And, and, you know, my bigger concern is the, the. Lack of diameter for the, for the cul-de-sac, but that's why, you know, if, if you can demonstrate that. Three dwelling units can be achieved there anyway and meet compliance, and this is simply a way to break it up into single families versus. A duplex, uh, that's something that. Would really help me and make my decision, so if you could get that to us, that'd be very helpful.
Okay, sure, absolutely, glad to do that, um. So, street trees are out, little more work to do on the.
Well, Mr. O'Brien doesn't vote, so let's his opinion now.
Watch it.
Um, any consensus on, or I know obviously not a final decision, but any thoughts on the site lighting question, wa- waiver question?
We don't, we, we don't have a streetlight requirement, we have post lights at the house, so I don't, I really don't even know what you're referring to, we have. You have the option to do streetlights or you have the option to do post lights, so I don't even know if that wave is necessary.
Okay, well, we'll go post lights.
Unless something changed in the, in the, um, subdivision rules and regs that I'm unaware of, but I, I think it's a. I, I actually, post lights have always been preferable, so.
Sounds good.
Anybody from the board? Anyone, is everybody still awake?
Yes.
We're here.
Alright, so do we have a, um. Can we, when do we want to continue, can I continue? Meeting, I know there's a lot of stuff coming up.
We had, we have the, the meeting in June, June fifth, um, and then the meeting after that is the regularly scheduled one is July seventeenth. Um, but I, I don't see, based on the information Mr. uh, Dias provided, I don't see an issue. Um, well, I'll leave it up to him and his client for June fifth.
Um, i- if the board is good with it, we would prefer June fifth over July seventeenth, certainly, and I think we can get the information to you folks. That you're asking for tomorrow morning.
Alright. If all these hearings happen, Mr. O'Brien, we're gonna be here till midnight on June fifth.
Sure thing, we'll just move quickly.
Do we? Is there a reason we don't have a second meeting in June? Is it a holiday or something? Is that?
Uh, it falls on the same day as Juneteenth, so it's a holiday.
Is the town office is closed on Juneteenth?
That is correct, yes.
And then what is the the Wednesday after that?
The Wednesday after that? Um, we can, we can discuss this, I guess, more.
I I just, I just think we have all this stuff and if we have a meeting in June and then we don't have another meeting for five weeks.
What I can tell, what I can tell you is that early on last year, we approved the schedule. Um, so I'm just adhering to the regularly scheduled meetings.
I I agree, I just. I just think maybe, maybe with all the stuff on our plate to get stuff done, we should consider adding a second one in June.
Completely appropriate.
Mister Chairman, if you would, um, Mister O'Brien and I discussed this as well because. Uh, the application for ninety-six Main Street is gonna be coming in, and I think they would like to have a preliminary discussion on that. Uh, preferably in June and not in July, so there might be the opportunity to have a second meeting.
So I guess we we should.
Can we handle that right now and vote on a second meeting and put this?
I I I would say leave it up to June. I would say let's have a, I'll put out a poll in terms of availability. Um, but I would say that we should have a definitive date for a special meeting at June fifth.
Well, I guess my thing is, this is a preliminary subdivision plan, right?
Correct.
It's not advertised. Is this something we can kick to the second meeting in June that we set up? I mean, I don't.
I would, I would, I would say that we push it to June fifth and if. I think that's more appropriate and fair to the applicant.
Okay.
Cause that doesn't guarantee anyone that's not gonna be on the meeting on that the public hearings or the other ones that have continued, not requesting other continuance.
Alright, I just, we might be there till midnight on June fifth.
That's fine.
So do we have a motion to continue this to June fifth?
Motion?
Maybe Miss Spagon, do we have a second?
Good second.
And Miss Rojas, any discussion? Okay, Mister Geller?
Yes.
Miss Ross?
Yes.
Miss Spagon?
Yes.
Mister Haley?
Yes.
Yes. Um, so I I think we should um. Definitely try to do a second meeting, maybe that last week in June, just before the fourth of July. If if we could do a poll for that, Mister O'Brien?
Yeah, like I said, I'm gonna have to put a poll of. Board members availability, uh, cause I don't wanna not have a quorum based on in availability. Um. So let's, I'll put out a poll for board members and then.
Well, if if we can't, I mean, the seventeenth of July, we should do one. Right after the fourth, some whenever we can.
What I can do is get a poll of the all the board members, Pat, and then at that June fifth meeting. We can publicly address when that special meeting would occur.
Alright. Alright, um, if it's okay with the board, um. Item seven, we have an A and R plan that I have a conflict with, uh, so I would let, could we? I can either sign off now or we can do um the the minutes for um March twentieth before I go.
Well, I think you can pause and. We can rediscuss too, it's us A and R plan, but I would just ask because the vice chair is not here. That either Steve Astrid or MJ um participate um.
Well, alright, so yeah, so MJ. MJ is gonna vote now, correct? Yep.
Yes, she's a senior member, yeah.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go refuse myself. I'll find something to do and then just shoot me a text, Shane, when I can um.
Sure.
Sign back on and I'll finish out uh item um agenda item eight.
Well, I'll just, I'll just, I'll get this along. Um, alright, um, we do have a. A and R plan regarding one fifty-nine Summer Street, map forty-eight. Lot one sixty-four. Um, I believe Silva Engineering is here to present that.
Good evening. Uh Larry Silva from Silver Engineering Associates and in the background is Rebecca. Rebecca Baptiste is in the background there for anything else. Uh, so um first of all, procedurally. I I I love the board to consider the A and R plans be moved to the beginning of agendas like they used to be, but that's just another thought, that's all. Um, this is the property, it's just just under two acres, one point eight acres in um. On Summer Street. Uh, two fifty-nine Summer Street. For those of you that are familiar with this property. This is a very historic property going back to the seventeen hundreds. Uh, the 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 house and the bond. And the bond is a um. It it's really an impressive whole structure. That uh we don't want to lose. Uh, as we move into the future, there is sufficient area here. If uh we were just looking at it uh from that viewpoint that we has got plenty of frontage, we could have made four lots here. But we'd have to sacrifice uh something along the way, and that would be like the bond and and all the house. And that's just not gonna happen. So uh what we've got before you is uh a division of the property. In which we retain the house and and the bond. And then we have two adjacent lots, two and three, which would be um. Hundred and twenty-five foot frontage, meeting the setback uh requirements. Uh, the the square is shown, that's required to be placed there. So those two are very uh are conforming now. As you can see, there's a footnote next to the existing bond. Which says that in order to endorse this as a as a form A. There are three things that have to happen to that bond. One is it needs to be raised, and I can tell you that ain't happening. Okay, number two, it needs to be moved. Or a variance has to be granted uh for it to uh be as close as it will be. To the borderline to lot two. Uh, there has been a uh variance request. Uh, placed, uh, and there will be a hearing coming. Um, up soon in order to try to deal with that issue to see if we have to. Move it or if we can get a variance. We hate to move it. Because not only is it a bond, underneath the bond. I don't know if we had, we didn't have a picture available, did we, Rebecca? Um, under underneath the bond is, it's a um, it's a fieldstone foundation. Which has access to it from the Leonard Street side. Uh, it's an impressive bond. Um, and so um, we don't want to lose it. Uh, we could put it on a regular foundation and 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 push it up. You know, uh, further up on that same lot, that would work. But we're, we're hoping that we don't have to do that. You can see that. That area underneath it with the fieldstone, we were gonna grant a variance back. Um, two lot, one for the access underneath there. Uh, but it really is an impressive bond. Uh, having said that, everything else uh complies. And uh your endorsement doesn't uh do anything other than um. Allow us to divide the lots in this in this way. Uh, but our dealing with the bond has to be done in in one of those three ways. And uh that's that's a a common note that's put on when you have a structure uh that doesn't come into compliance.
Well, cool, thanks. Um, just from some staff comments uh to the board, um, we don't have any issues with this. Um, the proper information is uh. Provided on the plan, uh, there's proper frontage for this project as well as a footnote talking about. How the the endorsement of this plan doesn't make any zoning determinations, the applicant. Uh, in this situation is going is has requested a variance and will be going before the zoning board of appeals. But um, that really doesn't affect anything that deals with the endorsement of this um. Plan other than the creation of. Uh, lot three, two, and uh the changing in size of lot one um. Once this is endorsed and recorded. Uh, but I think the only other comment is uh when this plan is endorsed, I'm going to need, um, being that Pat's. Uh, recused himself of this project um. And is the sole signatory, I'm gonna need at least uh. Three planning board members to um come sign the Marlar and sign the uh plans for uh prior to the applicant recording of this at the registry.
Okay. And when do you need those signatures by if this?
Uh, it would be anytime after if this is endorsed by the board.
Okay.
So. But we can uh, we can do any uh if endorsements.
Yeah, I I mean, I don't have any questions. I don't know if anybody else on the board has any questions. Um, but if not, I'm like a motion to endorse this A and R as proposed, see.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second. I guess I'll take a roll. Do you want to do a roll call vote, Steve?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Oh, Steve Geller? Yeah, you said yes. MJ Spagon?
Yes.
Astrid Rojas?
Yes.
Ian Ted Haley? Ted, you there?
Yes, sorry.
Yes, yes and yes, okay. Alright. Just come in um. When you can to endorse, um, so appreciate it.
I thank you very much.
Alright, let me text Pat to come back. Or I can tell him to stay away. On the record, he'll see it on YouTube. Uh, but let me um. Wait for him. It's gonna be midnight.
Shane, it shows that he's on the screen.
I know.
Do you un, do you have to, are you unmuted?
Uh, he's trying his best.
Uh, I went, I went downstairs to make a coffee because it's gonna be a long night of work ahead of me, so I'm sorry.
Oh, we we want to stretch this out since Larry loves being on this.
He wants to be first next time.
Is that age before beauty, is that why or? No?
It's a tie.
Hey, um, hey, uh, and I saw Mister O'Brien, he sent these March twentieth minutes out.
Yes.
Is there a draft form? Did everybody have a chance to look at them? Yep. Does somebody want to make a motion to um accept the minutes of March twentieth?
So moved.
Motion to accept?
So I'll do uh motion by Mister Geller, second by um Miss Spagon, is that okay?
Yeah, that works.
So um. Actually, MJ, now that I'm back, you're not voting, correct?
No, uh, Michael's not here. So MJ's.
Oh, I'm losing my mind.
It's okay.
It's only Wednesday, Pat.
I know. So, alright, so motion by Mister Geller, second by Miss Spagon, I'll take the role, Miss Spagon?
Yes.
Mister Geller?
Yes.
Mister Haley?
Yes.
Miss Ross?
Yes.
No, yes. Okay, thank you. Um. Board items for June fifth, Mister O'Brien?
Um, we got pretty much everything that was on this meeting continued to June fifth. I know we had a little healthy discussion. On uh having another special meeting, we do actually have. Two additional minor site plans that will be placed on the June fifth meeting. Um, that will be advertised for that meeting, but um just based on the timing and how we approach things is. Though some items may be continued, but uh we'll have two additional items placed on the uh. The June fifth meeting, so we'll be uh working on those as well.
Where are those, Mister O'Brien?
Where are the, where are those? Um, we have one. It, they're kind of in the pre-application process, um, but one is on Bedford Street and the other is on Park Terrace. But um I'll have, by, we would have.
You haven't advertised those to set a date yet, correct?
Uh, I. Haven't, but I would say just based on our conversation earlier, it would be more appropriate to advertise them. For that June fifth meeting based on the the timeliness of them submitting it, rather than advertise. These projects out for um. A much later date. I I would prefer just having it.
Well, my, my, my point is if the next couple of days, by the end of the week, if we can schedule a June meeting, would it make sense to put those on the second June meeting?
No, because my deadline for June fifth is Friday and I'd rather just have it advertised properly. Um, rather than. Like I said, if if it need be, those two items will be placed last on the agenda. And if we feel like we're fatigued or we don't have enough information. Um, or at that point, so much information's been provided, we can happily continue those items, or we can give um. Those clients a heads up.
The chair, just just a question, we, most of the board here tonight except for one member, can we vote to take, to pick a date now? If we're all available? O'Brien, you comfortable with that? Do you want to do a poll?
Um.
Up to you, Shane. I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, this.
We can just, if we want to throw some dates out there, I'm I'm happy with it, but we don't have to. What I, what I'd like to do is at least minimally on June fifth announce. Uh, that we'll have another date. Um. Posted, or I can post it at least on the agenda, on the the town calendar. What date we can utilize.
Well, let's, let's look at this right now, let's.
So we got the twenty-six and we have, we have to be considerate of other.
Boards.
Other boards and committees at that time as well.
So I'll get, so 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 if we can't do the nineteenth, that'd be the twenty-sixth is what you're saying, correct?
Correct.
Well, we could do. Well, you see, July fourth week, we usually don't have anything, and July fourth is that first week, we could do, what's that, the tenth of July as well?
Like you said, it's up to the board at that point, you're just having a meeting before another meeting. Um, but yeah, it's 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 tough in between the holiday and July third. Um. But like you said, we can let this, we can think about it, let it soak in and do a poll. Um, as well as I can advise this board on what other meetings are on different dates. Um, for other uh. Meetings in town.
Because EBA usually meets on uh the the opposite weeks of us, so.
Correct.
Mister Rully may. Not be available for us, so vice versa, I don't know what, you know.
Yeah, let me, like I said, it's it's your guy. It's your guys' availability and as well as looking at uh. The town as a whole, because I don't know, maybe there's availability the day before the holiday on the nineteenth or the day after.
Yeah, send out, send out a couple of dates, we'll figure it out by the end of the week.
Yeah, I'll get you guys some dates.
You okay with that, Mister Geller?
Yes.
Um. Any uh planner reports, Mister Rully, Mister O'Brien?
Um, yes, I have one thing I just want to kind of bring up briefly. I think you and I discussed it, Pat, but um. We have an item that's come. To our attention that Mister Tanzi and I have been working on. In regards to um nine hundred Bedford Street. So rather than have the applicant come back in for a minor modification. Um, there's been some, I guess, some issues in terms of the underdrain. Uh, or the lack thereof at nine hundred Bedford Street. So the applicant um at the request of the town, um. It has been reviewed by town engineer and myself, uh, is proposing a uh a trench. Uh, perforated uh underdrain and a cleanout that seems to be. Uh, appropriate with solving this issue. Um, so what I asking, I guess. From a board perspective is for myself to take care of this administratively. Rather than have this go back before minor modification. I know that we have a process where the board determines what's a minor modification, but. I'm just kind of clarifying on my end if this is appropriate because it's. Such a miniscule thing and it's more of an improvement to what's been done rather than adhering from or. Kind of debt being detrimental to the overall site plan. It's just an additional uh improvement being made.
So Mister Tanzi, this underdrain, it would still receive pretreatment, correct?
Yes.
And this is a pretty minor engineering thing?
It's it's, oh, sorry, sorry, Mister Dancy.
Uh, that's okay. Yeah, it it's minor.
And you think it's a good thing to add?
Yeah, it's a necessary thing to add because. Um. It's just a a basin, a large basin that receives. A large amount of stormwater runoff. And I have been monitoring it. You know, weekly. You know, weekly. Um, eh, ever since it was, uh, constructed. And on dry periods of time, it, it does drain down. On wet periods of time, it still drains down, but it doesn't drain down quick enough. It doesn't meet the. The seventy-two hour drain down requirement, so this. This modification will ensure that it will meet that criteria.
I'm staying, quick question, we've already received an ASBelt for the site, or we have not?
We've not, they haven't asked for a CO yet.
So, this will be reflected on the ASBelt then, correct?
Correct, this is more of a field change than anything else.
Okay. Boyd, questions, uh, comments, or feedback from Mr. O'Brien?
I had a quick question, Mr. Chairman, if it's alright? Um, it, Phil, refresh my memory, where is this property on Bedford Street? It's nine hundred, you said?
The big one.
Is that really big? Is that the big warehouse one that's?
That's correct, yes.
I'm near that old rise where the billboard used to be?
Yep.
Okay.
Is that it, Miss Spagon?
Yeah, I just wanted to know where it was in relation, cause I, I couldn't recall if it was one of the larger projects down on Route eighteen. Or if it was a new one that had already just come before the board and had already been approved.
No, can't miss it.
When I heard the term minor modification possibility, that sort of like, just tipped me off to like.
No, if, if, if it was, if it was anything larger in nature in terms of actually changing the geometry of the site, yeah, this would be something that would. Functionally be sent back, more, this is more of a, a point of. Uh, like letting you guys know that it's more of an administrative change, just because it's. Very small and just keeping you guys in the loop.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, so I think, um, I'll find, like, if everybody else, if everybody else is okay with it, uh. Alright, thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
Problem, that's all I got.
Hey, one, one thing, just. In the future, whether it's the summer or the fall or whatever, just when you get a chance. Maybe we should develop, we, we have site plan, we have site plan and special review checklist and standards for. Regular sized projects or regular projects, right? Now that we're handling duplexes on the side. Um, as a special permit. Maybe at some point, we should actually spell out what we want, like, we want architectural, so you know, I'd like to see architectural, we want. Uh, you know, say, but just a checklist, just, just so it's a, it's like, uh. You know, we have like minus site plans or as major site plans, it's a minus special permit checklist versus a major special permit.
Yeah, we could just have special, we could establish special permit standards specific to duplexes. I don't think there's anything inappropriate there.
Cause I, cause I look, I look at it like a regular site plan, I'm looking at it like a six foot wall. And then Mr. Solari saying that's out of our purview because it's residential, one to two units and, and that falls more into the building code, so.
It's, it's, it's one of those things, it's. There are elements of building code, but there is elements as clear as the, the zoning ordinance to say that you guys are the special permit granting authority. You know, if, if you don't want it, then we get, then we go through council to change it, but yeah, I think minimally at this time.
I think it's a good idea, I think it's a good idea, but maybe we should have.
Standard specific, so if someone's coming in, they understand what the requirements are.
It's not a full blown special permit, it's, it's a minus special permit, it's sort of a minus site plan, and here are the checklist items for that versus the checklist items for, uh. You know, a nine hundred square foot or a nine hundred thousand square foot warehouse, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I can, I'll have, I'll have some, I'll have something for you guys to look at. So, let me do work on that.
Surrounding towns do it that way, I can look around, see if they have any.
Sure.
Just practices around like that.
Sounds good.
Because it is, it was messy tonight and I apologize, but it, it, it's something that we've never done before, so.
No problem.
Alright, um, anything else? Any, um, board comments? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion?
Second.
Miss Spagon, Mr. Haley? Second? Any discussion? Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Miss Spagon?
Yes.
Miss Ross?
Yes.
The Geller?
Yes.
I mean, yes. Oh, nobody better be sick on the fifth.
Alright, everyone, take care.
Our best.
Have a good night. Yeah.